It is 4:30 and I want to call together this meeting of the City of Tullahoma Regional Planning Commission. And as I look around, we have four officers here, so therefore we have enough to hold business and have a quorum. So before we begin, I'd like to go ahead and recognize tonight is the last night that Scott Gregory will be on our board. I hate to say that because I've trusted and relied on him for a lot of things in this last year. We appreciate your time, your effort. He served seven years on this board and given this city seven years of time and we appreciate that. And so we want to recognize him tonight and say thank you very much for that, Scott.
Thank you.
Amen. And now I'll ask you all to rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. If you will, please let us pray. Dear God in heaven, as we come before you tonight as a board and as a city, we seek to do that which is right in this city and good for this city and the things that will bless the city and help it to be stronger and better than it is today. We seek your help, your wisdom, and your guidance in everything that we do. And we ask these things in the name of your Son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, board, if you will take a look on pages two through four, we will read and approve Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve, motion and second to approve the minutes as printed on pages two to four in the packet. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The minutes stand approved as presented. Reports of officers and staff, Lee?
We have a consultant group. We got a grant from T-DOT to do a community mobility program. They're from Gresham Smith and I'll turn it over to Mr. Gresham.
Thanks, Lee. I also have John Halb with me from Gresham Smith as well. Just wanted to give a quick overview of the draft, final report that we submitted last week. I see that hard copies have been distributed. And I apologize for our throwback font that we have here. It looks like we've got a newer font that's not recognized, but it should be interesting to see how it looks. Next slide, please. So today, I just wanted to give a quick overview of the project, give a quick recap of our analysis of existing conditions and future needs, a quick recap of community goals and objectives that we discussed in public workshops, go over our recommendations quickly, briefly discuss the prioritization tool that we'll be submitting with the final draft of the report, and then just touch on next steps quickly. Project overview. So for those of you, as most of you may know, this was funded through a T-DOT Community Transportation Planning Grant. And we actually have Andrea Noel, you're from T-DOT, and I'll just let her address that real quick. Thanks, Andrea.
Thank you. My name is Andrea Noel. I'm with the Department of Transportation. I'm based in Chattanooga, so you're in Region Two as far as we're concerned. This is a competitive grant. We just started it about four years ago to help communities with their transportation needs. This past year, in 2019, we were able to give out 22 grants for over $1.5 million worth of grants. T-DOT funds 80% of that, and then the cities usually fund the other 20%. But because you had a co-grant with Manchester, then you guys split that with, Manchester was 10% of the grant, which normally these grants are pretty expensive. But we really appreciate you guys having the thought to apply for the grant and letting us come into your community. And we thank Gresham Smith for great work on this plan for you all, and thank you.
And we thank T-DOT very much for allowing us to be involved. The last section up here, the last bullet, just comes from the application. And our charge was to produce a planning document that takes a holistic view of the mobility needs of both communities. So the presentation tonight is going to focus, going to look at it through a Tullahoma-centric lens, but we looked at everything holistically for both communities. We were charged with focusing on five corridors, so US 41, US 41A, Stair Route 55. That includes Wilson Avenue in Tullahoma as well. These were the five focus corridors that we looked at. We did take, as you'll see, a network-based approach, just because those corridors don't exist in a vacuum, but those were the primary areas of focus. You know, we had three phases of the project we've been working on since January. The first phase, we capped off with a round of public workshops in May. The one here we held at the D.W. Wilson Center had great attendance, great participation. Over the summer, we've been working on roadway, bicycle pedestrian, and land use recommendations. We presented those at a final workshop back in August at the Annex, the Coffs County Annex. And then right here, we're on the penultimate step, the final presentation. We'll take any comments we get from this body, the local officials, and roll them into the final master plan. So just to recap, the existing conditions and look at existing conditions and future needs. First thing we looked at was corridor traffic analysis. Looked at existing and planned roadway facilities, specifically the ones from the last 2013 plan update, traffic growth projections, traffic analysis or crash analysis, and also looked at level of service. The table on your right there shows the outcome of the level of service analysis. The big takeaway from that is if you include all of the projects in the 2013 transportation plan, you really have pretty acceptable level of service both now and in the future. So with the suite of improvements that you all identified in your 2013 plan, you're actually in pretty good shape on a lot of these corridors going forward. Next slide, please. We also did a bicycle pedestrian analysis, same deal. We looked at the recommendations from the 2013 plan. We also did a demand analysis, which is the map you see on the right. The darker colors show where you would expect to see higher demand for bicycling and walking if there were good facilities. Those are places, your schools, parks, commercial areas, et cetera. We also did a bicycle pedestrian crash analysis, as well as a level of traffic stress analysis, which is on the next slide. I know these are a little small, but on the left is our bicycle LTS, level of traffic stress analysis. On the right is pedestrian. The difference, you can probably see pretty easy, is that on the bike one, there's a lot of green; on the ped one, there's a lot of red. So on the bicycle, what we see are local neighborhood streets that are generally pretty comfortable for users of all ages and abilities to bike on now, maybe with just a little bit of improvement. Our main corridors, though, are relatively dangerous, certainly not comfortable for the average user, and active barriers to getting across town. The sidewalks are really tied to whether or not there are sidewalks present. You can see a little bit of green around the downtown area where we do have pretty good sidewalk coverage, but other than that, I think it underscores the need for an expanded pedestrian network. Just to rehash the key findings on the corridor traffic analysis, generally on the corridors, we have a pretty acceptable level of service now and in the future, including the 2013 roadway projects, so pretty good shape there. In terms of crash hotspots, we looked at two specifically that not just had a high volume of crashes, but also fairly severe crashes, so resulted in injuries. US 41A, North Jackson Avenue and North Washington Street, which we heard about, both public workshops, and also North Jackson, kind of near the golf club lane area. There was a good cluster of crashes, too, so we wanted to keep our eyes on those. And then bicycle pedestrian analysis, the bike-ped demand we looked at, it's highest near downtown and kind of radiates away from downtown with less intense zones of demand. So definitely, the core of that network is right where we are downtown. In terms of crash hotspots for bicycle pedestrian crashes, North Jackson between Jack for Our Lane and West Grundy Street came up. And then level of traffic stress, just like I said before, need to do some work in terms of expanding the pedestrian network and also safer bicycle facilities on major corridors. Community goals and objectives, this summarizes some of the feedback that we got at the first round of public workshops. I know that the table might be a little difficult to read, but we asked the public what were the community goals that were most important. The one that came in top was focusing walking and biking connections on local streets between neighborhoods. The second was emphasizing walking and biking improvements on major streets. And coming in third was just targeting all transportation improvements, including roadway in areas experiencing residential and commercial growth. We also asked folks just what type of improvements they'd like to see, just a simple visual preference survey. Not a lot of surprise here, but people wanted expanded sidewalks. They wanted to see bike lanes with some separation from traffic to enhance user comfort, and that included separated bike lanes, side paths, and greenways. They also were interested in potential development strategies like mixed-use development to reinforce walkable centers and access management, too, just managing dropway access so there aren't too many curb cuts. Next slide, please. And finally, we asked at public meetings, just at public meetings and in an online interactive mapping tool, to just let us know what they thought, what type of facility improvement they wanted and where. This summarizes it. I know it's a little difficult to see, but the red are sidewalk improvements, and the blue and purple are bike lanes and some capacity suggestions, and then intersection and crossing suggestions as well. So that leads us to the recommendations. The roadway project recommendations is what we have here, you see on the map. These are pretty much carried forward from the 2013 plan based on our level of service and safety analysis. They tend to come in and address the areas that we've seen problems, so we really just wanted to give a thumbs up to the 2013 recommendations and keep these in mind as Tullahoma goes forward to updating their transportation plan in the future. It's 10 total projects. It includes nine miles of new roadproof roadway, and that includes a new roadway, the Stair Route 138 Cedar Lane Connector. The total estimated cost is $23 million for those improvements. Bike by network plan, just to get everybody on this, using the same vocabulary, these are the types of facility types that we use. Different plans use different ones, but paved shoulder and buffered, paved shoulder and bike lane are things that we would expect to see in a more rural area. Buffered and protected or separated bike lane are things in higher volume, higher speed areas. And then bike boulevard are neighborhood connections, and then for shared use path and side path or freeway or side path connections. And this is that network. So really, the highlights of it, along North Jackson and Lincoln, we've got some buffered and separated bike lane recommendations, as well as buffered separated bike lanes along major corridors like Cedar Lane, which is one that we heard a ton about. As you get away from the more developed part of town, you transition to bike lanes and paved shoulders. And really, I think the highlight of this is an expansion of the city's existing freeway system, particularly around the southeast side of the city, really building off of the existing freeway that you have now. And certainly in our final public workshop, we heard a lot of support for doing that as well. So it's two miles of bike boulevard, 18 miles of buffered separated bike lanes, about 23 miles of bike lanes paved shoulders, and about 26 miles of greenways or side paths. And a lot of these are projects that won't necessarily be implemented in a vacuum. A lot of them, like Cedar Lane, for example, are going to be included as part of scheduled and programmed roadway improvements. Excellent. Pedestrian network plan, really the big thing here still is that freeway extension around the perimeter of the city. Within the city, we really focused on two things, and that was closing the gaps of the existing network and also making sure that we had good pedestrian connections to schools, which was one thing that we heard time and again at both public workshops and online. So it's six total miles of new sidewalks, but a lot of those are really targeted investments. We also had 18 intersection improvements as well that were identified almost entirely by the public, either in person or in our online map. And those consist of really just state-of-the-practice pedestrian crossing improvements, crosswalks, pedestrian-activated signals, things like that. And the next slide actually shows a couple of examples of that. And I know this is a little difficult to see because it's black and white. The one on the left is a crossing that came up constantly, and it's Tullahoma High School, that north access point there at US 41. We've got a crosswalk possibly with some high-visibility pedestrian treatments, like a potentially a pedestrian-activated warning light or even signal potentially. And then on the right, you've got Stair Route 55 and US 41. And again, this is just putting in crosswalks that are up to national best practices. Again, those are just examples of implementation, and you can probably see those a little bit better in the hard copy of the report. Finally, to tie them all together, the transportation and land use, we did a quick development form concept. This particular example is for the US 41A and West Brizard Street. So here you see the existing profile of the street. You know, it's North Jackson, so it's five lanes with, or four lanes with a turn lane in the middle. And what we wanted to emphasize with this was the flexibility inherent in some of the recommendations. So the next slide shows really two different ways that this could look. The top one is with buffered bike lanes, so that's where you have buffered bike lane on each side of the street with landscaped median down the middle for access management. Alternatively, you could do separated bike lane on one side of the street that's bi-directional. So again, working with your constituents, landowners, T-DOT, everybody, you know, come up with an implementation strategy that's really going to work for that specific location. And again, that's just an example of what it could look like. Finally, with the final report, we're going to be submitting a, really a living prioritization tool. So we developed the network plans based on all the things that we discussed earlier. The recommended improvements, we applied some prioritization criteria based on safety and demand. Safety is crash history, network gaps, and traffic volumes. And demand are access or proximity to schools, parks, commercial centers or commercial areas, and areas of relatively high population density. And what you can do with this is actually create a schedule of improvements, and we'll submit a preliminary schedule of improvements with it. But you can also change the weighting for varying local priorities. So for example, T-DOT may have safety funding or safe routes to school, and you can say, well, safety needs to be the highest priority of schools, and change it and see what rises to the top. So it's something that can be used dynamically as you go forward. And ultimately, that's going to aid in the project development part of implementation. So the next slide shows just with sidewalks. This is just an example. We took, all things being equal, all the weights being equal, and took the top five sidewalk projects. And what we had was East Grundy Street between College and Birch Alley, all of Cedar Lane, basically. Cedar Lane between Stair Route 55 going all the way over to West Lincoln, and then South Anderson Street between, really right at the existing sidewalks of Lauderdale and Stair Route 55. That one, interestingly, the city just submitted a tap grant on. But this is just an example of what you can do with the tool. So we'll provide the tool, an initial ranking, and a user guide, so Lee and company can use it going forward. Finally, next steps, like our earlier slideshows, we're really close to the end here. This is a draft plan, so we are still entertaining comments, still making tweaks, but once we receive those, we'll finalize and submit the plan and the prioritization tool as well. So thank you, and I'll take any questions that anyone has. Yes, sir?
I have a comment. First, I'd like to compliment you on your work. I think you've done an outstanding job of pulling together a very comprehensive plan that has a lot of really good features, particularly from a quality of life standpoint. The one comment that I have, though, is I don't really see anything that improves connectivity at Interstate 24. And I see that as being a major problem in the economic development of Tullahoma. In particular, we have an industrial park halfway between Tullahoma and Manchester, the Joint Park. And one of the real drawbacks to marketing that property has been connectivity to the interstate there. Turns out, there are about five traffic lights and about three, exactly three schools of them to go through in order to get to the interstate. That same thing is true of people living in Tullahoma and trying to get to the interstate to go to either Nashville or Chattanooga, Mercer's Bar. They have to go through there, and I don't see anything in the Manchester plan to help alleviate that. There's also a problem, I think, in the northwest, northeast quadrant of the city, and not having connectivity to 55 and therefore connectivity to the interstate. There's, for example, Country Club Drive, Short Springs Road, and on that to Riley Creek Road, Loca Road. Those areas do not have a way to cut across very well and yet to 55 and thereby get to the interstate. And those are two deficiencies that I would like to see addressed. Otherwise, I think you've got a lot of really good features in the plan. I compliment you on your work.
Well, thank you for that, and thanks for the comment, too. We'll, again, still have to finalize it, so we'll take another look at that comment. Yes, sir?
And following up on Commissioner Comer's comments about accessibility of the interstate, today, many people use the route along Riley Creek Road and Smith Chapel Road, a very, very dangerous route to take, particularly in the evening or night. And that's a safety issue that I think that your transportation and mobility plan is lacking unless you take safety as a major priority to eliminate that issue. And it ties together specifically with access to the interstate and the, as Commissioner Comer has mentioned, about getting access to 55 or onto the interstate. So I'd appreciate, this is not the first time that I specifically have raised this issue. It's not been addressed yet. I'd certainly appreciate it if it could be addressed.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Are we looking for any?
No, no, I mean, this was the first draft.
Okay.
He did a presentation. You've got hard copies for your consumption. And then any comments, recommendations that you might have, informed to me. I will get them to the consultant, go do a finalizing, the final draft. We'll see if we can get a hard copy online for the public to see as well, too, and get comments from them as well.
Are we doing another, one of those meetings where people can come in and drop by and look at it again, or no?
Yeah.
Okay.
I will say, because I was at both the meetings here in town at D.W. Wilson and the one in Manchester, and the time and the effort and the work and everything that went into that and the analysis that comes out of it is very impressive. I'm very pleased with that work.
Did you feel like we had enough turnout to get feedback from people at those meetings?
You have the turnout buried a little bit, but I think the big takeaway was the people that came, came ready with really good suggestions. And, you know, there may be some additional suggestions that we need to take a lot of a look at, but we got great feedback, both in person and online.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, in the, any other reports from officers and staff, Lee?
I don't know, Mr. Gresham.
Okay, then we begin to look at old business. And first thing on the agenda in old business, item A, the police station revised site plan, the site plan for the city police department, 10,932 square foot building at 213 West Grundy Street.
I was going to let you know one thing. That's actually a courtyard. The building actually is right here. That's a courtyard outline up there, so that's not the entire building. It's just, he's going to show you a rendering.
Are both of those segments that are white courtyard?
That is, I think it is.
This is the building.
Yeah.
Right.
And that has to be the open space area in the plaza.
Yes, this is the plaza area. Also, we're seeing these paving strips.
Okay.
And so the building outline really stops right there.
Okay.
I know you have the site plan, but there's a rendering here that may help show the character of the building. And then we also have some images of the plaza area.
Would you like to put them up here so that the public can see them?
We did have an open house for interested members of the public earlier this afternoon, so quite a few people came by and looked and asked questions and became more familiar with the planned building.
I was going to comment, the building footprint has changed. The original plan that was approved last, almost about a year ago, last November, this was the, that was the site and the site plan that was approved last year. You'll see that the building is, has reduced in size, but the scope of the project has expanded to include the parking areas, you know, along the alley behind City Hall to improve the drainage, and I believe to improve the topography and level it out.
Yes, that's correct.
It's currently zoned C1. Staff gives it a favorable recommendation. It should be definitely uprooted in that area as far as parking and new facilities. It shows the zoning of all three properties in there. And that's the area.
And C1 is consistent with the use that we would be using.
Yes, institutional or any government uses are allowed to C1.
All right.
They exceed all development standards of zoning orders.
Do I have any motion from the council on this?
Commissioner Tipp.
I have a motion to vote to, are we sending a favorable recommendation? Are we, we're approving? Okay. Because some were favorable recommendation. Okay, so I have a motion and second to approve the site plan as presented, the revised site plan, I should say, as presented on pages.
Or no?
Page eight through 16.
Maps are on.
Maps are on, all the way back to 16. Okay, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The approval is given.
Thank you.
The next old business is Town Homes at 1,008 West Lincoln Street. A request to allow a planned unit development with 13, excuse me, Town Homes House units on a 3.1 acre lot at 108 West Lincoln Street. This begins on page 17 and carries through to page 26. Is it 26? Yes, that was 26. That's all in there, yeah.
I don't know, it keeps going. I think 30.
No, 27, 28, 29, up to page 29. No, 29, 30 is even part of it. So this is to be, this is not a public hearing.
You can, the State Commission can hold a public hearing on any item on the agenda as long as it was put on the public notice, and this item was put on the public notice.
Very well, then. We shall open a public hearing on this issue. Okay? Before we begin, I will explain the rules. Before we begin, I will explain the rules of the public hearing. This is a public hearing for the, for the public of Telahoma to be able to speak and address this body about this issue. And this issue alone, okay? First of all, you will be allowed two minutes to speak. When you approach the platform, state your name and your address, so you know where you're from, and you'll be allowed two minutes. If you have others that are with you who wish to speak, they also have two minutes, and they may choose to delegate those minutes to you, but to do so, they must come forward, give their name and their address, so that we know that they're also from the city of Telahoma and have the right to speak on this issue. Is there anyone who does not understand the rules of this? Very well, then. I open this public hearing on this subject. Who's the representative for the people that are applying?
A lot of Art and Eric Burge on behalf of Mr. Denby who's applying.
Okay.
I'll just give a quick rundown of the project.
Thank you.
It's 13 units. It's a town home style apartments. It's located on West Lincoln. It's zoned to R1, but planned unit developments are permissible in R1 District. We heard it last month on the 21st of October, oh, excuse me, back in September, and we carried it over for today. There was two conditions that were put on there when it was postponed last meeting, and that was one, that the neighbors were notified with a letter, which they were, and that there was a plan that would be submitted on the open space, how it would be developed, how it would be maintained. Staff has not received that, that plan on the open space, so our recommendation is to postpone it until we can get a plan to review.
Considering that not all of the requirements of a PUD have been met per the ordinances here in Telahoma, it would seem that it would be appropriate to postpone the vote until the next planning meeting and until Mr. Denby can reply as to his plans for this in writing.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
As a representative of Mr. Denby, the planning commission, it was here last month, they met with the technical review committee, I believe everything was approved and put before this board. It was, for whatever reason, more public notice than was required last for, and the letters were sent out, and there was a question that came up in front of the committee about what the open space was going to be and how it was going to be used. And I think, I don't know if it's articulated then or not, it's, it's going to be open space, and it's going to be, we have a surveyor and engineer here to answer any technical questions, but the plan will be submitted to the mayor and board and alderman. It was not a requirement, as my understanding, it was not a requirement whenever it was approved by the technical review committee. It's met all of the requirements other than this committee asking what it was going to be used for. And I can tell you, and we have the engineer and the surveyor here, and Mr. Denby, it's just going to be an open area. It's not going to be developed in any way, it's just going to be there. So, I, we would ask that it go forward today, they've met all the requirements, there wasn't any specifics for what needed to be done, other than what are you going to do with this area? And it's just going to be an open plan. We've received an email from, or not we, the engineer received an email from Mr. Lawson, specifically mentioning that the, had to be an open, the permit had to be received from the mayor and alderman, and that, we don't believe that's the purview of this, of this board that would be. We would apply to them once the project is approved. Now, this board can put some stipulations on, on that, say that we give a recommendation as long as it meets this requirement, but this is a two-month delay of a project that we don't think is necessary, and it is, it's just not proper to do that at this time.
Comment? Yes?
I would be happy to answer any question that you have.
I believe one of the major concerns from the board that we met last time was, how was this open space to be maintained?
Right.
Who would maintain it? What's it going to be? How would it be maintained? And until that plan is submitted, I recommend we follow the recommendation of the board and postpone it at least until we receive that plan. Mr. Lawson, may I ask a question just from my own understanding? Are not the zoning ordinances of this city the purview of the planning commission?
Yes, but in this particular case, this would go to the board of mayor and alderman, ultimately with a recommendation from the planning commission. So you must act one way or another with a recommendation before it goes forward with the board of mayor and alderman. And before you make that recommendation, you have the authority to require additional information as you consult.
And I think, I think the question was, it was more, you know, what is your plan? It didn't say it had to be writing, it didn't say what's for, it just said, you know, what do you?
I, I asked the question, I think, and so did Alderman Knowes, because my concern was also, one, how much will the city have to take care of this? Are we going to have to spend money to do that? And my other question was whether it's going to be useful to, I didn't know if the, the person who's developing it would actually put in maybe a playground or something so that the actual residents could utilize it, which in my mind would be beneficial for those, those families.
Yeah, and the answer to that question is private property, so he would have to maintain as any other private owner would have to maintain any property in the city. I mean, that would go for everyone here, just the regular ordinances, and that's how you have to maintain. If it got out of hand, I'm sure they would, they would, the codes commission would say this needs to be mowed, this needs to be picked up, or things just like you would in my house if I didn't own my yard or anybody's, or anybody's house, he would still own the property. So, and secondly, I'm sorry, but what was your second question to that?
My other question was?
About having a, having a playground or something like that.
Yeah, in my mind, these planned developments are supposed to be something that, that could have things like, whenever I've thought about a planned development, I think about a place that has like, you know, like a coffee shop, and then also at the same time, you know, multiple housing units on it, and then other things. In my mind, this is something that families are going to want to go to, to rent or to buy, and in my, that they need something for their kids and something, that use, that space could actually be utilized.
Yeah, and I understand that, and I think the answer to that question is, it's part of an economic decision or a private developer decision, that's not going to be done, and that's, again, not something that the city should get involved in to the level of planning down to the specifics of what every, you know, everything that they're going to put in there. As long as it meets the requirements, which it did through the technical review committee of, you know, the safety standards and all that thing, all those things, getting down to those details and delaying projects in order to meet specifically what the board may or may not want is not, is not what the board is here for. And I understand those concerns and those things, and they may make sense to do, and one developer may want to do it one way, and one may want to do it other, and things like that, but we just don't believe that that's something that should delay the project, that we've met all the requirements, and that it should go forward for a vote. If, if, and it should go forward with a vote, even with a caveat, like I think Mr. Lawson just said, you can approve it with, with a caveat.
And I guess that's my question for Mr. Lawson and for Lee, is that, I thought that with the planned developments, that we could actually get into more of the nitty gritty of what that looks like.
Yeah, you've got, you've, what it is, it's a kind of a balancing act where you're allowing somebody to build something in a district that would normally not be allowed.
Mm-hmm.
On the other hand, you can leverage that with a planned unit development to ask for amenities.
That's, that's what I thought we were doing in this case.
You have that option.
I think, I think you do have that option, up to a point, but whenever you have a, because you, this could go on eternally, because if you have, you say these are requirements, this is what we want, the developer meets those requirements, and then puts it forward in front of the board, and the board thinks of a new requirement that they want, I think that that decision would have to be made on the front end before the plans and everything are submitted, is my argument, that, because then you could just keep moving the goalposts forever. And I know that the developer is getting a benefit with the PUD in building something that is not supposed to be there, and there is a trade-off, I understand that, but if you don't know that on the front end, it is impossible to hire engineers and surveyors to plan for something that if the goalpost is going to get moved, and every time we come up, there's another requirement. So I think if PUDs in the future, or things like that, if that's a real concern, that should be put in at the beginning.
But then if we approve it, doesn't it put us in a situation where it sets precedent that we've approved it, and then?
No, because you just said you have the ability to change PUD, they're really, you're asking for something, so you can, yes, somebody would make the argument, well, you did it for this guy, why wouldn't you do it for me? But that's what you just, you just stated, you have the ability to do that on the front end, not moving the ball for developers whenever they're toward the, toward the end, and that's, that's the argument I would make.
And we are on the front end, but I would point out that when I get to the zoning ordinance, and I haven't found the number on it yet, I'm going to look right here and see if it gives me the number. Doesn't, just says planning considerations. But there is a notation on element 10, the site, element 10 states, "The site plan indicates the applicant will preserve 2.68 acres of open space in the rear portion of the lot, zoning ordinance section 902E." And it goes on to talk about preservation and maintenance and all of that. And it states in segment B, "Creating a permanent open space easement on and over the said private open spaces to guarantee that the open space remains perpetually in recreational use, with ownership and maintenance being the responsibility of an owners' association," which you don't have because you have only one owner. So you've got an owners' association with one owner then, "with articles of association and bylaws." Articles and associate, and association, of association and bylaws, which are satisfactory to the board of mayor and alderman, that's why you're taking it to the board of mayor and alderman, but in those bylaws should be spelled out what that property is going to be done with, what's going to happen to it. It should be in writing, and it should come through here. That's why we're saying that we should have seen the plan here tonight. You should have presented it through the bylaws of your, of your owners' association.
Well, I would respond in two ways. One, like you just said, a one owner homeowners' association, it's pretty easy to win a vote to change those bylaws because he would have the ability to do what he, what he wanted with that, but it, obviously it would be subject to the zoning regulations and general maintenance that everyone is, is subject to. My, we would just submit that this delay is unnecessary, and that it would make more sense to move the project forward with the caveat that that be submitted, and it has to pass, pass the mayor and alderman, the board of mayor and alderman has to pass that anyway, and that, I don't, I guess I don't understand, if you did submit a written plan other than it's going to be open space, there's going to be nothing built there, it's just going to be space, it's going to be what it is now there.
Well, no, you would be stating that it's going to be open space that you are going, or that the owner is going to maintain, as an open space in a recreational type environment.
Right, and I, I don't mean to be argumentative, but that's kind of, that's a given, that's what you would have to get, to get it zoned that way, and if you finally?
If it ain't written down, it never happens, sir.
Well, that's what a zoning ordinance would do, I believe. But that would be our suggestion, and, I mean, I think there's some other citizens here to speak about that, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
In our last meeting, we asked for two actions, one for that plan, the other one for the letter to be sent out to the neighbors, inviting them to a public hearing. We've, we've heard from the developer, good, bad, indifferent, we've heard from him. I think we now should move and hear from the, from the, from the neighbors in the public hearing.
Don't disagree. Please approach.
My name is Jacqueline Parks, I live at 117 Reagan Street. I'm on the back parcel of this open space we're discussing. And I think that is a very vague term, and I think you're right to ask that we be clarified on that. Is it going to stay what it is? Is it going to be developed into a playground? If it is developed in any way, are we going to handle the already existing flooding issues from that property that myself, my neighbor at 115, and several other neighbors on the backside of Cambridge deal with? The other aspect of that is, I would like to know if the planning committee has any way of maintaining whether or not that's going to stay, what income level those rentals are going to stay. I know I've just spent about $160,000 renovating a house over there. I don't really want Section 8 behind me, for quite clear reasons. My backyard is open to that entire property, and that's a bit of an issue for me in what's supposed to be a low-density residential area. Really all I have to say on that.
Yes, sir.
My name is Charles Dennis. 112 Stone Boulevard has been my home since 1954, when my mother and father built that. I now have my daughter living in that home after my mother's death, so we are really rooted at 112 Stone Boulevard. We have bought those side property. Part of, and I did not see the plat until tonight, part of those houses will be directly behind us. I was going, I was concerned at first that there would be two-story. I found out tonight they're single-story. Very pleasing to me. The way they face this street will look like housing rather than apartments. But I, too, will tell you, there is flooding back there, because as a kid, I played in that swamp when it rained heavy, and we caught toads and frogs, and occasionally a snake. A big concern I have on this is what I used to call Cumberland Springs, which is now West Lincoln, is a racetrack. It's not a street or a road. Be there some morning at 8:00, be there some afternoon at 4:00. From Cedar Lane out to the city limits, it's a straight shot, and people are in a hurry to get to and from work. I don't know how or what the city could do. I don't think there's room for turn lanes in or out of this property, but it is something, I think, as you look, according to the National Census, every home owns 1.62 cars, which is two cars. So you've got 13 units, you've got 26 cars, you've got one way in and one way out, and that road is very busy, they're going to be tied up, and they're going to tie up some of the time for the others. Other than that, I can only say I hope they are good neighbors, and I'm sure they will be, but if this property is going to be rezoned throughout as an R2 for a PUD, why, if some of it's going to be left open? Couldn't part of it be zoned re-too, and the others stay horrible? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kenny Sadler, 290 Interstate Drive, Manchester, Tennessee. And I'm the engineer for the project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions now or later, if there are other comments, but the open space is a requirement of the PUD, and, you know, opinions are going to vary on what the open space is or would need to be. And I understand the planning commission's position, that a playground would be nice and other things would be nice. However, if I were the owner, like this lady that just got up and spoke, I don't know that I would want all the families there to be able to come back to my corner where my house is, you know, this property is roughly a thousand feet deep. I did discuss with Mr. Lawson, you know, trying to get from after, after it was deferred, you know, sending emails, and I think he was sending emails, trying to get some clarification on exactly what the planning commission's desire was on the open space, because Mr. Denby's desire was to leave it as is. It is a low area, there are drainage issues there, that's why we have avoided it. All the drainage for this development goes out to the street. It has a detention area that passes the two-year through the 100-year storm event, so we have avoided the back area and kept all the growth around the perimeters so that there would be built-in privacy in addition to the screening that we've done, which is well beyond probably twice as much as what would be required for the city of Telahoma, so. So an open space, and residents are here tonight, I mean, I don't know that, that they're going to want someone to come in and clear out all this, this natural growth that is going to promote more activity going on behind their houses. If I were a resident there, I would not want that. So I do understand your, your concern, but I'm just not sure I would want that if I were the person that, that lived there. So Mr. Denby's approach had been to leave it as is, leave as much of the natural vegetation around the property as, as he could. And so, I mean, as far as a plan, you know, to present, he doesn't have a plan to present because he wants to leave it as is. For those reasons, it is, it is a low area. You know, again, all the drainage has been taken to the street to avoid any more drainage, and we're exceeding that. You know, we've, we have improved the drainage on here, the landscaping, the position of the buildings, the finishes of the building, you know, it's all brick and rock, architectural shingle, I mean, it's, it's very nice units that Mr. Denby is proposing here. So he's not trying to get out of anything, he's just not wanting to, to do anything with the open space, other than be what it is, which is open space. But, but I don't know if the residents would want all that cleared out, you know, or not, honestly, I just, but it's, it's a low-lying area with, with the natural vegetation around it as it is. And that was his desire, was to leave it at that.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Anyone else?
Yes, sir.
He mentioned water. I'm Jerry Spurlin, I live at 108 Hamilton Lane. All the water out of Reagan Street and out of that swamp drains in front of my house. I built a bridge across the drainage creek, ditch, I tried tubes and they washed out. So right now, water is coming over my bridge, after they built the subdivision up behind us, to the west of Hamilton Lane. We drained that also, and they put in a drainage sump. So I guess what the engineer is saying, that there's no additional water going to flow east on West Lincoln to Hamilton Lane. In other words, they're, they're paving over a large section of now, which is just grass and soil. So that's my question, will additional water be coming down Hamilton Lane? Thank you.
Can I answer that?
Sure.
Okay. Yeah, the, again, the detention area that's provided is, is on the street. All the development that we're proposing here would drain to the front. So we have, we have brought all the buildings, all the parking lot areas to the front. Again, that detention pond that's designed exceeds the, you know, Tallahoma requirements. And it does pass the two-year through 100-year storm event for the detention, so there would be no increase in stormwater as a result of the development.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Daniel Berry, 132 Linda Lane, Tallahoma, Tennessee. This is the kind of development, I think, that we need here. We do need good units, people who live in that aren't low-income housing. I guess my questions would be for you to think about those, and maybe the answers. Are there any ordinances that this does not meet? And are we kind of debating here over just preferences of what we'd like in here versus something that they're failing to do? I think we asked for letters, or you'd asked for letters, to the neighbors, which they've done. And the second thing was, the plan for the open space, which they're just going to leave open, it sounded like from what you read, the rest of this stuff gets passed up to the homeowners and charged up like that, it's passed to the board, mayor and alderman for approval. And I hate seeing this delayed, and I hate seeing this kind of thing delayed. And I'd love to see if you guys, if there's not an ordinance that's breaking, to not hold this up, and let it get forward to the board of mayor and aldermen, and let them make the decision based on your yes or your no recommendation.
Thank you very much. I will try and address that question. While things such as what Rupa mentioned, like playgrounds and things like that, are very nice, and, and we like to see things that, like that put in, that's a point of personal preference in a PUD. That's not a requirement. But there is a requirement, that if you say, "I'm going to leave it as open land as it is now," that you put that in writing, and that be part of the PUD that you're submitting. That's all we ask for. If you want to say, "We're going to leave it just like it is right now," then say, "We're going to leave it just as it is right now, and let it go at that." That's all you had to do. That's all we asked for.
Was that not done?
Not to us. We were not issued anything that told us that.
Now, you were issued on the plan, what was required was, what was required is, is an open space easement to be recorded.
Oh, yeah, the easement has to be recorded, you're right about that, yeah.
That's the easement part, but that's really, what it was, was there was a, the condition was that they'd come back with some type of plan and maintenance about, you know, how it's going to be developed and how it's going to be maintained.
Yeah, in other words, they're not going to let it overgrow. If they want to leave it like it is, okay, but don't let it overgrow.
And where in the open space easement, it would be, it would also spell out that it would be the responsibility of the owner to maintain it as far as keeping it from being a fire hazard, or some kind of issue with, with the brush, or, but that would be, what would be required, that needs to be approved by the board of mayor and alderman. Reason why we needed it this board meeting is so that you can make a recommendation to the board, so they know which way the board...
See, we have to say a recommendation, favorable or unfavorable to the board of mayor and alderman. And without knowing that, and not having that in the plan, then it's difficult for us to send it to the board of mayor and alderman, because if they read it and raise on that board, and so is Rupa, and they ask, "What's the plan for that?" And we have to say, "We don't know," they're going to send it right back to us, and we're going to have to deal with it again. I think it's easy to take care of, gentlemen, I really think it is.
Oh, I, I think it is as well, chairman. My name's Eric Birch, 200 South Woodland Street, Manchester, Tennessee. What I, what I think the point is, is that you can either approve it or not approve it, but give whatever recommendation you wish. And you can also make a caveat that they detail how this open space is going to be maintained. But they make that to the, the board of mayor and alderman is going to have to approve that. So that's why we're asking this commission to take a vote tonight, and let us proceed to the board of mayor, mayor and alderman, because ultimately, that is who's going to have to approve this open space plan in the end, anyway. And at that point, it will be in writing, that it will have to be maintained the way it is in its current state.
Mr. Chairman, we've been, this board has been castigated for delaying this project tonight. We've not delayed this project. We asked for specific from the developer and his representatives before we voted on this tonight. We've not received it. We have not delayed it. It's been delayed by the owner. So we cannot act on this favorably tonight, we can only act on it unfavorably or postpone it.
That's true. It's not, it's not, what we had to have wasn't presented.
Can I ask a question? Or are we in that place where we can ask a question?
Well, at this point...
So my question is, was it presented, though, by him saying, I, I just don't know what the legal ramifications of whether he's met the, the rules or not? Because we asked for this to be sent to us, but then he's saying, "We're going to leave it open, and because it's going to be within the codes, you guys are there to enforce the codes anyways, I'm, I will be abiding by them?" Does that suffice for what our request was?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, the issue is, they're going to have to do the open space easement. There's, there's no escaping that. It's in the zoning, zoning ordinance, it's in the regulations. So that guarantees the fact that it'll stay undeveloped.
And that'll go on the plat now?
Yeah, that'll be, well, it'll go on a, it'll just be a deed drawn up, the easement could be described on it, or it could be done by plat, either way. And then that, it would have to be approved, it's a mutual agreement between the developer, because he's dedicating it to the city, so the board of mayor and alderman have to accept the dedication.
So if he's dedicating it to the city, then the city will have to maintain it?
No.
No, he's only dedicating...
Okay, gotcha, no, okay.
We're just, the purpose of the easement is to make, make sure that it stays open space, that it doesn't get sold to a new owner, and they...
They use it.
They don't understand it, and they build on the back, and once we done gave the concessions of allowing this type of development, that normally wouldn't be allowed in that zoning district, or, so that's the purpose of the, you know, the open space easement, is to maintain that open space.
I'm just making sure that we don't get into any legal issues by delaying it, if that makes sense.
Bear in mind that the easement is a document that would be prepared and executed after it's finally approved by the board of mayor and alderman. So they can say tonight that they will do that. They will, they will, by easement in the document, properly executed and recorded, dedicate the property for public purposes to the city. You wouldn't do it beforehand, because there's no reason to prepare that document, unless it's going to be approved.
Right.
So any, any recommendation that we make will include that, the finalization and execution of an easement for public purposes for this project. So we can say that as a requirement when we, in our recommendation to the board of mayor and alderman. If there are any other issues that want us, if we justify delay, we can delay it for other reasons.
What's in question is the, the remainder of the property, and how that's being designated. And they're saying they're going to leave it just as it is, just open space like it is right now. And that should be a part of the documentation that would have been presented to us, to tell us that's what they're going to do with the property. And then everything would have been done. So that's the only thing we were really missing tonight, was that.
Can we put that in the recommendation, then? When we put a recommendation out there, that that has to be put in writing? You know?
Well, I mean, you can, you can put it in your motion when you, if you to approve it, but it's still going to be required, no matter if you, you put it in there as a condition or not.
Got it, yeah.
And as a matter of clarification, tonight is the first time that I heard that we didn't have what we needed. You know, because, again, Lee and I have been communicating, thinking that we were on the same page as far as what the board's desire was for the open space. And Lee and I had both discussed the fact, even up until, I guess, Wednesday of this week, or, or last Friday or Thursday.
The plan to met the requirements. You told me that there would be attorneys that would be representing, you know, we'd bring a documentation of some sort. That was my assumption.
Well, the documentation, based on the email, yeah, and the direction I got, was to be prepared by Mr. Vass, and it would go to the, to the mayor and board of aldermen for approval. That was the direction I got, is those documents would be required. Again, like your representative has said, you know, these things would have to be approved then, you wouldn't do those things prior to having to move on from here. So I'm just really confused on what exactly the open space, I mean, what you read from Mr. Lawson previously, he has it in writing what that space is. It's just that the surveyor hasn't put the easement on to get approved by the mayor and board of aldermen, so it can always stay as open space. So in my mind, I don't see how any, anything is deficient from the standpoint of the open space. I understand it is a requirement, and I understand Mr. Lawson has put that in writing to you, that it is a requirement. So I'm not sure what's, what's misleading about that. It was just that the desire was to leave it as is. And again, I'm, I'm pretty sure the residents would probably rather have it like it is than to have that area developed as a part of, you know, activities for the residents that live there. But...
And, and my point is, whatever you do with it, as long as it's legal, totally legal, whatever you do is fine with me.
Right.
I just want you to tell me that's what you're going to do.
Yeah, with open space to remain as is, and would have to meet every ordinance that the city of Tallahoma has, like everyone else's property, would have to meet, I mean, there's no difference in this.
And, and all I needed was that in writing from someone, and we would, we would be done.
And not to be argumentative, but I don't know why we would need to put in the writing something we already have to do, we have to follow. The open space is a legal definition, we have to keep up with that definition, just like everybody else does, so.
And it's not a problem at all to put it in writing. I think the only thing is, the direction I was given was it would need to be put in writing for the mayor and board of aldermen, not for the planning commission. So that was, those, those items.
But if you think about it, how could we ever forward something to the board of mayor and aldermen that was unclear, that we didn't know what was going to be said to them? If I'm going to, if I'm going to send something to the board of mayor and aldermen, I better know what it's going to say. Because I don't want someone calling, I got two of the board, of the aldermen sitting right across from me, and they're going to look at me and go, "What did you do this same weird, why did you say this when we didn't hear that?" And they're going to want to know why I said it when they didn't hear it in this meeting, or in writing. That's all. And why is it a hardship to, for it to have been presented up? That's...
I don't, I don't think it was a hardship. I don't think there was any exact direction that had to be made in writing. I think it was a conclusion by the committee that said we need to hear what this was going to be used for. I, I was at that last meeting, I didn't watch, I didn't see the exact minutes, I didn't see an order that came down, said, "This must be in writing," is it, "What is your plan for the space?" And that's the plan for the space.
It's in the plan.
It's in the plan. It's our original plan.
There's no development.
Open space, so.
And, and again, no one was trying to leave anybody out of anything. I thought it was clear that that's open space. The easement, you know, Mr. Vass would do an easement to go with the plat, to submit to the mayor and board of aldermen. So there was no, there was no motive to try to keep anything from this board, for sure. It's just to remain as it is.
If not, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'll entertain a motion on this request.
We'll move to delay, next month, until we get in writing, as requested, planned use for the undeveloped area.
Do I have a second to this motion?
I'll second.
I have a motion and second to delay a decision on this request until next month, until we can receive in writing that final document that we requested. Any discussion that we need to...
But doesn't that suffice for that at this point, or no?
It's not in writing.
But it is in the minutes. Right? And then...
Would you prefer to hear from Mr. Denby, the owner himself?
No, we do, we, we just ask it to be put in writing in the, in the documents that we would be presenting to the board of mayor and alderman. That's all.
Would you like him to write something today, that he will promise to maintain this as it is? Close the public hearing.
I'll close the public hearing, yes.
No, a motion.
Yeah. And we have this, and we have a discussion here, right?
And we're having discussion here.
So that's my question, is, does that, I just don't want us to be delaying something, get into a situation where we get hit with a lawsuit for delaying inappropriately. Does that make sense?
Yes.
And is that feasible in this situation, that that could be happening?
It would be very unlikely.
Okay.
No.
It's a planned use development, it's not like a use by right, like, you know, like somebody was coming here, built like 12 houses, and put in a subdivision, worry we're gonna get a use by right.
Okay.
This is a planned use development, so, no.
And is this sufficient, though, that we have it in the minutes that he has said, and his lawyers have said that he's planning on?
That would be up to the board.
Uh, no, we're, I'm sorry, the public hearing closed, so we're in discussion here now. Okay, so, I have a motion and second to postpone any other discussion. Then I'll call the question. Those in favor of postponing until we receive in writing the, uh, the information on the planned use of the undeveloped land at the back of the property. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, um, considering everything, let's have a roll call, just to be sure. Mr. Comer, your vote.
Sir?
No.
Aye.
Aye. I vote aye. You vote aye?
No.
No. So it's three to two, so the motion carries, and it is postponed, until we receive in writing. All right? So, thank you.
Can you use a cocktail? Can you use a cocktail right now?
That's all right.
Feed the baby first, then do that. Feed the baby first, then do that.
All right, all right. The next, the next subject on the list-
Thanks.
-will be, uh, new business, the subdivision plats. This will be a public hearing on the Denby Shelton. Come to order, please. Come to order, please. This will be on the subdivision, the Denby Shelton Crest Drive Minor Subdivision Plat. Uh, Mr. Lee, will you please explain?
It's a residential subdivision, three lots, Crest Drive. Beats the, uh, all the subdivision regulations, and, uh, staff gives it favorable recommendation.
What pages are we on?
This will be on pages thirty-one through-
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven, thirty-eight.
Great.
Yes, through thirty-eight. This, again, will be a public hearing. All rules as explained before still apply. So, um, with that, I will open the public hearing for comment. Hello, Andy.
Hello, my name is Andy Best, 355, 273 Hans Hall Road, Winchester, Tennessee. I'm the surveyor on this project. I was asked to subdivide, or plan out, to subdivide this property on Crest Drive. This is over, um, off of East Lincoln Street. This is Highland Drive area, Anderson's Drive area. It's, it's back in the back, it's, uh, it fronts up to, the property is mostly flood zone, it has some, some edges, you know, the railroad tracks, and then you've got Power 55 on the other side of the tracks. What we're doing is, I was asked to, to determine the area of the property that was outside of the flood zone, and then subdivide that area, and that's what we were doing. We went out and mapped that flood zone on the ground, and now determined what, what kind of land we had to deal with, and subdivided from there. Thank you.
In the, okay. Andy, can I ask, on the map that I see on page thirty-six here, the dotted red line is the flood zone? Am I right?
Yes, I believe, you're probably looking at a copy of this right here that I have, there's, there are two lines on there that are kind of a red hue. There is a dotted red line, that is the scaled line off of the FEMA flood panel. The FEMA flood panel also designates a base flood elevation, which, uh, FEMA has, has used models to calculate where the water will come to when it comes to a hundred year flood, and they've determined that there's a certain elevation, a mean sea level elevation that the water would come to. So, in determining a flood zone or flood boundary, there are two ways to do so. There's map that elevation on the ground, or scale that line off of a plan, a, a, a drawing that's put out by FEMA. In this case, I've shown both. The dashed line is the scaled line from the FEMA firm panel, and the other reddish line is the actual, um, elevation mapped on the ground in the fuel.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this issue? Seeing no one else to speak to this issue, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve this request for subdivision, or is this a favorable recommendation? No, this is subdivision, so, to approve the request for the subdivision of this parcel. Do we have any discussion from the panel? Hearing none. We'll call a question. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Approval is given. Okay, next up on the list.
Uh, this is the Duffy Buchanan, Pile Road, Minor Subdivision Final Plat. It's, uh, it's in the urban growth boundary on Pile Road. It's, uh, 5.23 acres, it's being divided into two lots, meets all requirements for the city as far as subdivision regulations and the zoning regulations of this county. Staff gives it a favorable recommendation.
Are you the surveyor or the owner?
Yes, Chris Bateman, 521 Wizley Road, Tallahassee. I'm the surveyor on this property and the next one. And this was a piece of property that came off, a large tract of land that was auctioned off about two or three months ago, and the new owner is asked to subdivide this property in half.
Thank you very much. Do we have anyone else wishing to speak to this issue? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve this request for the Duffy Buchanan, Pile Road Minor Subdivision. Any discussion from the panel? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Next is the Southern Buildings Minor Subdivision.
Yeah, this was just like right down the road, or right adjacent to the subdivision we just reviewed. It's in the urban growth boundary, it's 7.5 acres. It, uh, is divided into, I believe, four lots, yeah, four lots. Meets the requirements of the subdivision regulations and the zoning regulations of the county, and staff gives it a favorable recommendation. It's at the corner of Pile and Greenwood, I believe, Greenwood Road.
Okay, this is another public hearing. I will open this hearing for comments from the public.
You can see from the platte how he wanted to divide this property.
One section of that.
Everything looks good.
Everything has access to a road. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this issue? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second to approve this request for subdivision on the Southern Buildings Minor Subdivision Final Plat. Any discussion from the panel? Hearing none, I'll call a question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Next up, surplus property request.
This is a recommendation, in this case. It's on a, directly in front of 114 South Maple Street. The lot is like 12 square feet short, being a buildable lot for zoning ordinance, so the applicant is asking for about three inches that goes along the front of their property, which would be a little bit over 12 square feet. They would be able to pull a building permit, once it got, you know, if it was able to get the 12 square feet. And the, the right of way right now is 60 feet for South Maple, and the minimum right of way width, it's per the major thoroughfare plan, is just 50 feet for, for, uh, South Maple. So staff gives it a favorable recommendation, except for, uh, fire department did not give it a favorable recommendation, but all other agencies that reviewed it did.
Was there a justification for their failing to approve?
Uh, it wasn't anything related to fire safety, I think it was, uh, related to setting a precedent of giving up right of way.
But we have sold right of way before, so that's not something new for us. What about along the, the other lots along the way? They're not requesting any?
Well, those are all built.
So, oh, they're already done. They were done before the size requirements changed, right?
And they're slightly bigger.
Well, they may, they may beat the size of your plot.
The minimum size requirement for a single-family home in the R2 zoning district is 10,000 square feet, but we have a caveat in the zoning ordinance that if it's an existing lot of record, you can still use it, even though it is less than 10,000 feet, but nothing less than 6,000 square feet.
I see.
So this owner's just trying to get his lot size up to 6,000 square feet?
Yeah.
The, I can, this is for discussion, but an issue there is, I mean, it would be a public auction. The neighbor could buy the land and prevent that owner from building.
We could put a condition on the, on who could actually bid on the, on the surplus property.
How can we do that?
It's, uh-
We, the provisions in our surplus property ordinance allow us to create any conditions we deem appropriate when we surplus property.
But that's done by the Board of Mayor and Alderman, right? That is done by-
But you, well, yeah, but this is just a recommendation here, so you would recommend it, you know, you could recommend it with the condition that, that, that only the adjacent property owner is allowed to bid on it.
Yeah. It, that's the adjacent property owners that I'm thinking about.
No, he, adjacent being the guy who wants-
It's not across the front.
Only one adjacent property here.
Two.
No. It's across the front.
It's across the front of his property. He's only asking for enough to go across the front of his property.
Yeah, but I'm thinking that an adjacent property owner could-
They would be adjacent at this time, and once he got the, he got the three inches, they might be considered adjacent, but right now, they're flush together, so it's going straight out from his property line, his property pins out into the right of way, so we would be the only adjacent property owner.
What caveat would we put on this, when we put it up for surplus auction?
That it would be only, only adjacent property owners to bid on it.
And who would that be?
The one guy who owns that piece of property.
That's the only one, yes.
We, uh, since we own it fee simple, I mean, it's-
It's not a big deal.
Why don't we, why don't we give it to him? Save some money.
We can't give away public property, public purpose doctrine does not allow it.
Three inches. Three inches.
This is, honestly, this Moody and I and Mr. Lawson discussed, this is just for the purpose of making this property buildable, get it on the tax rolls once there's a draw.
Steve, is, is there a minimum bid on the public property?
I think we're answering all your questions, Andy. Take it easy.
So otherwise, he could get it for nothing.
Preparing the deed.
He bids a penny for it, and he gets it.
Yeah, sort of stuff, yeah.
Andy?
I have one comment I'd like to make. I actually did the survey on this lot. In the process of it, uh, we did turn you over, Mr. Curble, back up. Mr. Curble purchased the lot two years ago. The zoning code changed between the time that he bought the property and tried to pull the permit. The zoning code changed, required making this lot an unbuildable lot. This lot has been off-record as a buildable lot in the City of Tallahassee since 1943. I went back in the chain of title and found when this lot was created. It is my opinion that this is unfair for Mr. Curble, that he has purchased a lot that is unbuildable because the code has changed, and that's why they're requesting this surplus of property.
Yeah, I don't think we disagree.
Since, since we can't give it to him, I believe we approve.
Second.
I have a motion and second that we send a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Do you wish to attach the caveat that only the adjacent, uh, owner may bid on the property?
That's really not within the purview of the planning commission, so I'd suggest we just have the Board of Mayor and Alderman make that decision.
With a favorable recommendation. All right, very good. So I have a motion and second to send a favorable recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. There are none, it passes. Municipal codes amendments, this is a public hearing, street curb and sidewalk standard ordinances, this is again in the urban growth boundary, Lee?
Well, no, this is for the city's, uh, the street development standards, but, uh, there's a little more to it, but it's, it's removing the requirement for our street standards to be enforced out of the urban growth boundary. So it would just be the county's street standards. But there's a couple more items in there. There'd be, uh, clarifications. Mr. Taylor? There were some, uh-
Yes, this is a public hearing, I'm sorry, this is a public hearing, so therefore all the rules apply, and I will open the hearing. Mr. Taylor?
Robert Taylor, 322 Mark 7, Public Works Director for the City of Tallahassee. These text amendments just cleans up the things that, uh, we found that need to be tidied up and cleaned up a little bit. It's basically what this is.
Are we approving this, or are we making a recommendation?
Recommendation.
I move we give a favorable recommendation.
Wait a minute, guys, wait a minute, I haven't closed the public hearing yet. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else to talk on this issue? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
I move we give a favorable recommendation. Second.
I have a motion and second that we give a favorable recommendation to the, uh, changes to the sidewalks and other requirements on here. Any discussion from the panel? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. And with that, we have no other new business.
I have an announcement, we'll have to start doing scheduling training- Uh, we're going to start doing scheduling training so they race their four hours in before New Year's. I'm suggesting maybe schedule like two hours next month and then two hours in December so we're not stuck somewhere for four hours. Just a suggestion.
Works for me.
Sounds good.
Now, we need to make sure that our two newest members are brought to...
We've got one that was already eligible to, to serve tonight, but they were out of town. And then, uh, Mrs. Smith, who will be taking your seat, Scott, uh, she's not eligible until after this meeting to attend any meetings. So we will be, they will be at full strength and, uh, full membership.
I've seen her name somewhere. I don't remember her name.
And just so everyone knows, we withheld the voting on new officers for this board this month because we didn't have a full commission here to vote and we want to have a chance for everybody to vote.
Randy Smith's daughter.
All right, I entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
A motion and second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Do we have to?
We don't have to anymore, right? Don't we have to not do that?
No, you have to. All those opposed, no. No opposition. We are adjourned.